All right, the hour will be in after seven. Opening meeting and a call. I'm here at the police station. We've got some of you all meeting up there. There's a lot of meetings that got a little bit...
I thought you did this on purpose because House and Yegos here tonight. I figured we'd bring him to the police instead of vice versa.
Like you're talking through the cell parts.
It's going to save on gas when they just walk.
They don't have to send a cruiser over there. They'll just have it right here. This is true. John, you know how I feel about you, my friend. Me too.
My friend. These are your feelings.
Oh, I forgot that part. All right. We have meeting minutes on February 7th?
Joe had some changes and I didn't have a chance to check them against the tape. So could you try those later?
Next time. Okay. All right, 7:01. Housing Partnership.
Does that work?
I don't know. This is my first time in this room, actually. Seems like it does.
Yeah, it's working.
Good evening, everyone. Planning Board, my name's Andrew Flowers and the Chair of the Walpole Housing Partnership Committee. I'm just here seeking a vote on the final housing production plan. In 2013, we had a housing production plan and it expired in December of 2018. So this is an updated version of this. What is it? It's a plan that we send to the state and get certified. It basically is a roadmap of single-family, multifamily, how to have housing in Walpole in the future that is affordable and is consistent with the character of the town. So I was here two weeks ago. We talked about some of the implementation strategies that were recommended in the plan. To clarify, the plan was drafted by Gino Carlucci, a consultant from PGC Associates that was hired by the town. The process was overseen by the Housing Partnership Committee, myself and eight others on that committee, as well as John Charbonneau. So yeah, I'm just here to answer any questions you have. We talked about this two weeks ago, but if you have anything else that comes to mind, I'm happy to help.
So Joe, you got anything on this?
I have no questions. I'm ready to roll. I can make some comments on it, though, for future use, but that may be more for a later meeting. So, but I have no comments, no questions. It's the same as the February one that was dated and received on February 7th.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. So at the last meeting, we had gotten the revision that day and I didn't have a chance to look at the whole thing. But as you know, I was concerned, really concerned about goal number seven. And goal number seven had stated in my summary, it had basically stated to concentrate downtown and east Walpole as the focus for the housing. And since, I mean, from day one when I was appointed to this board, I had stated that I was concerned with downtown as far as we have to digest what's going on. We have to see how it's going to impact us. We have 530 units coming on. That's a lot, all at once. It's not, you know, it's not in phases, so it's all at once and it could go really well or it could go really badly. And we don't know that until we deal with it. We deal with the traffic. We deal with how police and fire have to respond. We deal with, you know, everything, all the ways it could impact us. So I was really glad at the last meeting because I had flipped through the plan and goal number seven was gone. But then when I had a chance to read the whole plan, I don't know if I was disappointed or confused when I saw that although goal number seven was gone, consideration number two sort of mirrors it. So I guess I just want some clarification on, I would think the goals and the considerations sort of work hand in hand. And I just want an explanation on if one's gone, how the other still exists. I guess the mindset behind it, just so I can understand that better.
Great. Just to clarify, are we talking about goal six?
In the original, so in the original plan we had, it was... Sorry, we've gotten a few.
Yeah, I think it is. I think it's goal six, Katie.
Okay. Just bear with me for a second.
Page five.
No, it was goal number seven in the original. That was December, it was stamped in December 6th. It was on page 43. It was constructing new housing close to downtown and east Walpole. Maybe it was six and seven?
Yeah, I think it got switched to six.
Okay.
My comments were...
Okay. So the first one I had, that's why I'm referring to it as seven. But basically whether it's six, seven, five, four, what it comes down to is more housing downtown within the near future. And that's a huge concern for me and that's why I wanted, just want to clarify.
Absolutely. No, and we, you're very aware of, you know, the new housing coming downtown and the prudent path possibly being to kind of wait and see how that affects strains on infrastructure, pedestrian traffic, car traffic, et cetera. This goal six, again, it's a reformative goal, very similar to, I think, what the one you identified in the previous draft that was goal seven. I'll read it right now. Goal six says, identify public and privately owned property that can support housing development, particularly in areas close to existing services and amenities in downtown and east Walpole. So the motivation behind this goal is to say, what are the areas where affordable housing would make the most sense? And a lot of the kind of advice we got from the state level is, you know, we want to be close to transit options. We want to be close to the bus lines and commuter rail, also close to amenities and services, whether it's town hall and library and so on. So this recommendation, and I should be very clear, all the goals in here are not strictly binding policies, you know. I know you all know this, but when this plan hopefully passes, it doesn't bind the town to following through on these policies, right? It doesn't say that by voting for this plan, you endorse building more housing downtown, much less building downtown now. Because I completely agree with you, Katie. You know, waiting a few, some period of time to see how the added units downtown get digested, so to speak, into the town infrastructure is smart. So what this goal seeks to do is just to say, it's obvious based upon previous studies and was obvious to the consultant, that east Walpole and downtown are those kind of target areas. Should you ever do a smart growth 40-yard district, which is another implementation strategy, or whether you want to just build more housing units downtown or east Walpole, those are the areas that make the most sense. So again, it's not binding us as Wal, as the town of Walpole doesn't bind us to doing this now. It just says that in the future, if the town were to pursue, for example, I'm just throwing out a hypothetical, a friendly 40B and we solicit with developers and builders to do a kind of multifamily, you know, apartment complex somewhere, where would make the most sense? It wouldn't make the most sense to have, you know, kind of often a kind of a area far away from amenities and transit. It would make sense maybe possibly in these areas. But again, we're not targeting downtown by this. We're not encouraging that, you know, we open floodgates to development downtown immediately. It's just a, it's just a guidance based upon the consultant's recommendation.
And how long is the production plan? How often do we do it? Is it every 10?
Every five years. So expires in five years. But I mean, we could do another one before then, but yeah, it's really a five-year process.
Yeah, I wish I had seen it before the last meeting because I think I would have... I just, I understand it's not binding, but we are saying, that's what we think. And I don't think that. I have a problem with that. I strongly think against it. And I think, you know, if it were five years from now, it wouldn't be an issue because we'd know. We'd know how things are going, but we don't know. So it concerns me. It really does. And I understand what you're saying because it's worded as a consideration. It doesn't say, it just makes me uneasy. I guess that's the best way to put it.
Fair enough. And one thing I'll add to it, not only is this not binding, it's also really, you know, a lot of strategies we're putting on the table here, right? An inclusionary zoning by law and a housing trust is one option, you know, pursuing more friendly 40Bs or doing a smart growth district is another option. So by voting for this plan, again, I see it as kind of a buffet of options the town has, the different tools in the toolbox that it's metaphors here, that you can choose from to kind of make affordable housing, facilitate the development of more affordable housing. So even if you may disagree with, say, density bonuses, for instance, and I know Joe has spoken about his skepticism of those, that's fine. You can still kind of, you know, have hesitation in your case about building more downtown while still acknowledging that, like, should we ever do build, you know, in a concentrated area for affordable housing, let's look first in the areas that are closest to transit and services. Maybe it's east Walpole, maybe it's another area of town. So again, not only is it not binding, this is just a one option of many.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, can you do me a favor? And you know, when you're, when it's voting time and you get to the ballot, they have all the ballot questions. And each ballot question could be three pages long, single-spaced in, you know, eight-point font, right? So they give you the, a yes vote says, boom, a no vote says, boom, and they put it in layman's terms, right?
Yeah.
So for the benefit of the people on the board, just so everyone's very clear, and for anyone that decides to watch this when they get it posted, could you give me the 50,000-foot, a yes vote will do this, a no, having a production plan will do this, not having one will do this?
That's a great and very challenging request. I'll try my best. So in like a 30-second elevator pitch for each side, a no vote, in other words, ignoring a housing production plan, says that despite us as Walpole, town of Walpole, having less than 10% affordable housing, we're going to ignore the fact that we're exposed to unwanted 40Bs. We're going to ignore the fact that a lot of people in this town pay 30-plus percent, sometimes 50-plus percent of their income in housing costs. So it ignores that problem. It ignores, you know, again, unwanted 40Bs and the fact that we could do better in terms of affordable housing. A yes vote is saying, hey, here's a set of options that, what's the aspirational goal here? The aspirational goal is to increase the availability of affordable housing in town, not just in terms of amount, but in different types. Maybe it's duplexes, maybe it's condos, maybe it's single-family homes as well. And so a yes vote says, we're going to target to build more housing, number one. Number two, build it in smart ways that contribute towards our subsidized housing inventory, that number, the SHI, that we hope to get to 10%. We were at 5% for a while, we're at 7% now. We're in the right direction, but we're going to be set back in 2020 with the census. So let's keep moving in the right direction and here's a set of policy options that are going to help us move in that right direction, whether it's the inclusionary zoning by law or the housing trust or the smart growth districts or soliciting smart, you know, friendly 40Bs. These options allow us to build more affordable housing and make it, you know, easier for seniors who are downsizing or young kids who went to college, who graduated from Walpole High and who want to move back home and get an apartment and start their family. So that's how I would distill it down.
And...
Mark, can I just add something?
Sure.
For you go ahead. So Andrew, I think also not having an approved, an approved housing production plan by the state also makes the town vulnerable. If a 40B comes through, that could potentially give us safe harbor for a year or two. If we don't have an active plan approved by the state, then those units don't count to giving us safe harbor. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I was going to ask, that's kind of along those lines of what John just brought up. Is there, I don't want people to think that we could just wait and do it some other time down the road. Is there a deadline looming that if we miss, we do expose ourselves more?
Well, there's, so right now, we're currently, you know, we don't have safe harbor from 40Bs, right? Because we have less than 10% affordable housing units. The imminent threat, I think, is the Bernzab 40B proposal. And I hate to use the word threat because that sounds so ominous, but in other words, the reason why it's a, it's a bad deadline that's looming is when that is finished, if we don't have an active housing production plan, to John's point, those units from that plan won't count towards our number that would give us a short-term safe harbor, even if it doesn't get us to 10%. The fact that if we just build 0.5% of our units in a given year that are affordable, that gives us a one-year safe harbor. If it's 1%, it gives us a two-year safe harbor. And that's a, that's a nice reprieve for the town to have autonomy and full control over its zoning and its development. And so that's, that's one of the goals of this whole committee and this whole process is to take back control of development and place it in the planning board and the people of Walpole's hands, not, you know, not in others.
So sooner the better.
The sooner the better, yes.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, when I, when I heard Katie's question last time, I was actually concerned because I thought it was taken out. So I actually don't agree with Katie. I think, you know, everything I've read from experts and everything that, you know, really the best place to put affordable housing is, like you said, like near transit, near amenities, where we're already, you know, denser, denser housing is usually present. So I'm happy that it's there while also still acknowledging that it's just a set of recommendations and it's not saying, you know, we're going to invite mega developments right downtown or even east Walpole. It's just a set of recommendations, like you say. So, and then, you know, to that point, I mean, this, this plan is to help increase affordable housing, but it's not necessarily like we're going to go today at 5% and tomorrow at 10%. The idea is to increase affordable housing gradually and to, to give the town the tools that it needs to do that in a smart, responsible way that helps us keep, you know, the character of the town, helps us, you know, make sure our infrastructure is sufficient and helps us move, you know, move slowly in that direction. So I think, you know, some people might see it and be afraid that we're going to, you know, tomorrow our goal is 10%. But really, I think the smart way to do it is to just, you know, incrementally, you know, push toward that goal of achieving 10% at some point in the future, hopefully, you know, slowly. So I would say that. And then the other thing I would say is that there's, there's some recommendations in here for like development of a local initiative program. And that would be, I would hope, the planning board working with the Board of Selectmen. So I would really like to see that. I think that's a smart way to go about this and I would really hope that the Board of Selectmen would be interested to work with us and your committee so that we can really develop the right criteria that can serve the town and we can, we can be in control of what we want to do. And, and I'll just say, you know, a little bit what I've said before, I'm in favor of affordable housing. I think it's important and necessary and I hope that this document is approved and I hope that something is done with it and doesn't just sit on the shelf. Because I really think it's to the benefit of the town to be working towards this and, you know, providing affordable housing to residents and to potential residents.
Smart affordable housing.
Smart affordable housing.
No, sir?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So you just said something that made me kind of chuckle. There's smile people in the states saying, you know, what do you call transportation stuff?
Yeah.
Gee, everything has been developed that the town didn't do, deserve, lay out, bylaw, I mean, Moose Hill's way out and even Oak Street is, so I guess they don't pay attention to it.
Is that surprising?
No, they're just going to put it where it works, so it's there, so. Now, one of the things we needed from you, you guys vote on this?
Yes, sir. Last night we met and we voted unanimously 5-0-0 to approve this plan.
5-0-0. Come on in, your committee.
No. School vacation week.
Yeah, well, I would, I would have thought you would have at least got more than that. I mean, I know it's majority, but if it was that important and everyone else is on to school vacation, no, that's all right, but, okay. Nothing else to say since we're voting on it. This has nothing to do with the public, it's just our vote, so make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? What'd you do?
I voted.
Oh, I'm abstaining. So.
We're 4-0-1?
Yeah. Yeah, because, you know, when Mr. Petrosi decides to file against me, he can't come after me, right, Lou?
So Andrew, what I will do is I will type up a letter tomorrow to the Housing Partnership to see the Selectmen so they know that the Planning Board voted to approve this. So you'll have something on the record to give to the Selectmen, that's the Planning Board approval.
Great, thank you, John, and thank you, Jack. Thank you everyone on the board. Appreciate it.
See you, Andrew. All right. Let me get a roll here. Next one up, athletic fields. And here's the one he sent us. Did anybody got this one?
No, the same one.
All right. Town fields are up for tonight and as we discussed at the last meeting, we got to make sure that they were allowed to do that. So we went back to town, and this is only for an extension, so we have a request from the town through Jim Johnson that they want to give it one extension up through March 31st, 2019. So make that into a formal motion.
Seven.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, and May 7th. I get May 7th. That'd be good. I think if Jim sees that, he might be choked. March 7th. Do we have opening?
7:05.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll continue this to March 7th at 7:05 for the fields. Okay? So that's it done.
March 7th.
Yeah, March 7th. Let's go. Uh, 7:20. Nobody showed, so we'll just continue. Wonder when you're going to hear me say something, Donnie. Sorry? Hold it.
Not that, the letters.
Oh, you, oh, this one too.
Yeah.
All right.
That's only two.
That's two.
One more.
One more. So you got, you only gave me two here. I don't need that.
That's fine.
All right. No, it's not quite 7:20, but if anybody's here for Bristol Brothers, a special permit, that's getting continued, so just to let you know, so you don't have to hang out up on Rama. All right, 7:20, continuing public hearing, Highland Ventures, Fox Hill, site plan 1817, grant special permit, 1888. All right.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Conroy, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tom Brady on behalf of Highland Ventures proposed three-story storage facility on Route 1 at the corner of Fox Hill Drive. We amended the plans, those have been submitted to you. Mr. Bernardino from Boulder Engineering and I met with the fire department and I think we resolved their issues. I didn't see any memos from them. Police Department wanted us to take down the gate. Jim will go with you. And actually, that's going to help because the fire department just wanted to be able to back out, so make it easier for them. And most importantly, Mr. Maraski, the total fee was paid.
Well...
Based on, based on your calculation.
I know, but you still skipped out with $890. I wasn't going to say anything because of the square footage calculation that I used was the lower one, not the 120. But we'll call it even.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. So again, Mr. Adam Hurd from Highland Ventures and Jim Bernardino. So we're going to turn it over to Jim Bernardino, the engineer, for your questions and comments. Oh, just an update also, we went back to zoning. They're all for the project. They would not issue a decision unless the plans are finalized and stamped. You guys are good with them because they refer to the plans within their decision. So they want to make sure that they have the final plans when they grant their decision. But they are granting the special permit for reduced, pardon. Here we go, the battle, Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Well, the issue, yeah, but if they come to you and say you're going to have more, it kills it here.
They have not said that.
I, I talk, I understand. What have I said over the years? We get down to no issues, go see conservation, go see zoning, whatever, and you don't have to make a change, or you make a little change, you give it back to us, done. But we give it here, boom. You've got to go and change their minds.
The chicken and the...
No, no. We're, we're...
Both.
Well, thank you. I'll bring, I'll bring that message to Mr. Lee on March 6th. What we can have is to go right here. Who are you going to bet on, me or John?
Is it no gloves?
We're getting out of love a little bit, but it's, you know, you understand what can happen.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because I have to vote, I take in, in our board's Walpole. So I'm sure we all want this to go through and we're all going to work as hard as we can to get that done.
Wow, you can better than this.
I'm going to put this over to Mr. Bernardino before I screw it up. Thank you.
Thank you for the record, Jim Bernardino of Walpole Engineering. I feel like you step up to the podium like Ken or you just speak very loudly.
It's better. Whether you can get your camera or not. But you don't have to. You got to have his audio? Okay, then you can speak.
If any time I'm not clear, I can definitely go up to the microphone. As Tom did mention, we have progressively revised site plans based upon comments and feedback that we receive both from the board as well as various staff departments, Board of Health, Engineering, planning. So I'd like to just take a half a moment and run through the relative site plan changes that I think that the board would be interested in. Initially, the board requested a material data sheets for all of the chemicals that will be stored within the facility. We provided, well, we worked with extra space operations facility to find out what they would be storing on site. And primarily, it's just a list of household goods, pinesol, pledge, bleach, things of that nature. So we provided that list along with the relative material data sheets for each of those components. We did receive this morning a follow-up from the Board of Health mentioning that the package that the extra space operations put together for us was missing a couple of chemical components. You know, that was just an oversight and I would assure the board that those missing data sheets were inadvertently left out. Those are relatively cohesive with household goods, the pinesols and the pledge and of that nature. So we would like to, you know, have at least the board consider a condition of approval that we provide those updated material data sheets as necessary. Obviously, if the board would require or desire, you know, we could routinely update this, these lists of chemicals every year because they may change depending on their yearly protocol. We've also provided with our revised package a template lease agreement that the, all of the customers would be subject to, which clearly states that no hazardous or toxic materials are going to be allowed to be stored on the premises. During the discussions with the board, one of the board members asked that we had an exhibit that we presented as to where the locations that we expect to have excavations within four feet of the seasonal high groundwater. We added that detailing to the site plan itself and specify that, you know, there's clean material to be backfilled in those areas where the excavations within four feet of seasonal high groundwater are anticipated. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the excavations within four feet are generally related to the deeper excavations with the foundations and the footings for the, for the building. So once they are excavated and the footings are constructed, we're going to fill the soil back and top. So we'll still have a relatively significant, call it overburden, above the seasonal high groundwater. We also updated title sheet to have some additional detailing on the locust plan. It was one of the board's requests that that happened so that we could get a better understanding of the surrounding area as it relates to the development site. And one of the other items that we definitely wanted to discuss this evening was, as Tom mentioned in his introduction, we met with the fire department and went through a number of items that they had. We added some fire lane striping and signage and some additional detail, which is, you know, just site plan related. But one of the items that we want to bring notice to the board on is in the rear entry or the rear part of the site, we had a narrow driveway with an automated gate for those individuals accessing the back. When we were working out details with the fire department, there was concern about access to the back, maneuvering, backing out and the like. So as we discussed and brainstormed during our meeting... brainstormed during our meeting, we agreed to widen that driveway access to twenty-six feet wide, where it was, I believe, eighteen or twenty feet previously. The concern with widening that now is we cannot get an automated gate that could go twenty-six feet without serious consequence, I mean, it's a heavy material and the like. So what we did was, we looked and we discussed with the police department about security concerns regarding removal of that gate, they actually provided some correspondence that they were in favor of removing that gate, because it would allow them to gain access to, you know, all the sides of the building unimpeded, so they were in favor of elimination of that gate. And then, primarily, the remaining site plan revisions that were conducted were more technical in nature to address staff comments, engineering comments, things that you physically not see on the site plan, they're more engineering and construction-related details. We did receive one follow-up correspondence from the engineering department this morning, they had two remaining comments, one was to make sure we specified the correct pipe material for the water main, our notes on our plan specify, you know, per the requirements of the town, but we actually have a material from the engineering department that we could put on the site plan, and lastly, they had a comment regarding a little more construction detail on the underground infiltration system that we have in the front of the building. It's just more technical detail that we would be adding to the plan, you know, subject to the manufacturer specifications and review of the proposal, more shop drawing-related construction detailing, but obviously, we think that, you know, we could provide that with no changes to the site plan and just added detail. Other than that, I believe we've addressed the comments that we're aware of today in planning board as well as staff, you know, we hope that anything that's remaining is relatively insignificant, that could be condition of approval if possible, so with that, just open up to the board for continuing dialogue.
Okay, I read some of the comment, data comments, before I go, how's Stewie doing?
Yeah, he's fine.
All right, conservation, they sent us, Landis sent us to us and said, you've got it at water conditions, DEP number three one five eleven seventy-seven, so, just to let us know, what you said about the police from Luke Pollan, Wampu Police Department, and he said he looked at the gate at the rear of the building after speaking to you, he, he said eliminating the gate, we're not putting any safety concerns, the fact that helped them to get behind the building with their car, so they don't have an issue with that. Board of Health, and what you're talking about is giving us lists, they get the lists for all the chemicals, they're the ones, so, we're out of it after this, all right, so, this comes from them on February nineteenth, after review of the MSDS sheets submitted, appears that the package does not contain for all the chemicals listed, you indicated that, please note that MSDS for all onsite chemicals must remain onsite, there's a chemical noted on the ESS inventory sheet, named benzomatic, yellow and blue. Is this supposed to be burnzomatic?
I think that was a typo.
All right.
I'm not a chemist.
All right, next comment, commercial industrial establishments which store, transport, use, handle, manage hazardous material, more than fifty gallons of liquid or twenty-five gallons of pounds of dry must register with the Board of Health every year, and the onsite septic system has been reviewed, and they were submitted back to for follow-up. Next comment. Off to, I don't know where we get this, Board of Appeals, the project coming before the zoning board, and because we're better than you, we gotta wait.
Jan, isn't there one that Amy put on there today?
I know, it's, you know, at the same time, we're waiting for final, yeah, 'cause they, uh, got it.
Reading between your lines.
Read all lines, let's see, oh, okay, Maggie, you have a comment?
I need a story.
Okay, she talked about, you got, yeah, you gotta monitor naturally any of the dirt that goes on the roads for sweeping and removal, but I don't care, you know why? Ain't my road, ain't our road, it's states, so, you're gonna be dealing with them, so, we can't enforce that condition anyway.
Just for, the Conservation Commission does have jurisdiction over erosion settlement control as well, so if they see a discharge, they could definitely.
No, it's not discharge, it's when you're digging it and the trucks are going out on Route One with the dirt in them, in their dimes.
Well, that, that's part of it all, so, the Conservation Commission will have some jurisdiction over that.
And she talked about, on the underground drainage field, indicating the number of chambers in the array and the layout should be included on the plan, she said detail on sheet five not adequate, you know about that?
Yeah, it's just, we have some general manufacturers detailing, now that, you know, once we get into construction, we work with manufacturers, they provide shop drawings and things of that nature, so, we're just looking for a more construction level detail which we can provide, it's not a major issue, it's something generally we put together for the contractors for construction, not necessarily for permitting, so.
But something that would be on the permit trunks.
Yeah, it would something be, would be on the permit trunks, which we could add for, you know, the final endorsement plan, it, it will be more, very difficult to provide that detail.
You're picking from a array of different manufacturers?
Right, different manufacturers, we'll get site-specific, it, it will not change the drainage system plan view or anything, it's just more the construction detail.
And she noted the DI should be a class fifty, and I think, and that's all she had?
That's all she had.
And that's all we had for any comments, question, I mean, from the boards, Sally Sarah?
Sure, I have one question, can you tell me, there's a door that's shown on the west elevation, so the side that's facing Route, Route One?
Yes.
Is that like a fire exit, or is that an exit that's gonna be used often?
No, this will be an emergency fire exit, so it'll be coming off the stairwell, so, building code requires exits in certain distances from all spots in the building, and that is one of the fire code requirements.
Okay, okay.
I think previously we had it going out.
On the side.
On the side, but it didn't work because of the grades, by the way, so we moved it to.
Okay, I just thought if it was gonna be used often, there's no.
No, it's not.
Walkway, and it's not adequately lit, so, but if it's an emergency exit, that's fine.
Right, then that's all.
Okay, and then just one comment on the, the landscape plan, which is sheet ten, the gate is still shown, the gate that was removed.
Good catch.
What was that said, what was that said?
On, on the landscape plan, the gate that was previously for the back entrance is still shown on the plan, but it was removed on all other sheets, as far as I could tell.
Usually, our technology, we don't take a look at that, our technology, we wouldn't want it removed in at all.
Right, yeah.
Obviously, we're not set, we're not set up like that.
But yeah, I think the drawings are good, clear, and looks fine, thank you.
Yeah, I'm good at most of my questions, all of my questions have really been answered, it's very thorough, I like the project, so, I'm good.
Yeah, I don't have any questions or whatever, but I like your comment about your technology, 'cause being a contracting business, it's like, well, you always accredit them, 'cause it's on the plan, but never supposed to be, sneaky. All right, Katie?
I'm all set.
Joe?
The only comment I have is that all these potential conditions, we can have, we can give them to John, and he can add them as appropriate, I see that the Conservation Commission wanted to take, wanted another review of this based upon our additional revisions or requirements for additional revisions on the plans, so they wanted another chance to take a look at that and see how it affects them, maybe John can just check with Landis for whatever it is that the Conservation Commission had an issue with, and include that as a condition, you know, otherwise, I'm fine with, with the plans, I just have these conditions here that we mentioned before, and how do you wanna handle the ZBA?
Now, we're just, we're first, I guess, like the Marines, we're at the beachhead, so, motion to close?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, make a motion to approve or something.
Do we have a question from?
Well, I'm sorry, can I retake that back, I'm sorry, Bill, forgot about the public. Take it back, it's not closed yet, I didn't, I'm sorry, I skipped the public.
Hamilton, freezing five, I have a question about DEQE, have you applied for the DEQE permit yet?
I'm not sure.
No, DEP.
DEP permits?
Yeah.
DEP was what, the sixties?
Four, I don't think, there's no DEP permits that we're, we're seeking right now, everything that we have is local jurisdiction, whether it's Concom, zoning board, and planning board.
That's in zone two.
I believe it's in zone three.
We're in three.
No, you're not in zone three, you're in zone two.
I, I think I would disagree with that, but we could definitely look into that.
I can tell you, because I was in the making of the plan, that is zone two, less than forty feet, area two is zone two, greater than forty feet, and the town keeps making this mistake, and a hydraulic engineer had to be required for a project prior on this piece of land, and the hydraulic engineer disagreed with the environmental engineer, who said water doesn't run uphill and will never reach our wells, the hydrologist in his report said contamination from this site will reach our wells in six years and nine months, and that's on record with the town, so you need a DEP permit to work in zone two.
This, you're talking about, this is area three?
Yeah, area three, do you know what area three is? It's zone two, less than forty feet, area two is zone two, greater than forty feet. I tried to straighten this out, the town keeps making this mistake, that's why I gave up TV tonight to come here.
Look her up, such a friendly.
And it even, so the DEP process is separate from the town, the town has nothing to do with the state process.
Well, let me explain, DEP didn't know, the town never notified that the previous project was in zone two, and they don't have in the downtown crossing DEP office all our plans that when we developed our water protection overlay district, they're in Lakeville, now I don't know if they have storage problems or whatever, so these kind of mistakes, which happened at Gate House, we ended up with a forty project in Gate House, which are not allowed in zone two, and Gate House is in zone two, and that was the town mistake. I tried to correct this, but it was held at twelve thirty at night, no one cared.
Anybody looking at their phone, or are they waiting on me?
Well, I'm, I'll try to help.
I don't have a cool iPhone, so.
My wife.
No, yeah, I guess Stewie calling, mummy, mummy. All right, Sunset Drive, Hilltop, Fox Road, Fox Hill, and what calls that?
Zone, just for FYI, zone two is a typically blue hatch with a angle, you know, with a slight hatch.
Yeah, but we don't, we only have zone one, and we know what that is. Okay, this is in area three. It's our map.
Right, and area three is aquifer, less than forty feet, zone two is aquifer period.
We don't have a zone two.
No, 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 it's not, it's, I tried to get that corrected, we don't have a zone two, because Jim Mello, in his wisdom, didn't wanna have one zone two limitation.
All right, we have zone one, four hundred feet from a well hatch, boom, done, that's the only one we go with mass DEP.
Zero four hundred.
Four hundred, okay, area one, we got area two, area three, area four, this is area three for zoning.
What's the definition of area three?
Uh, primary recharge area.
Someone's changed that, because.
Very river stratified drift deposits was less than forty foot thickness and upgrading areas one and two.
It's aquifer, which is zone two, any, build it over any aquifer, you build it over zone two, now, it would be nice if you could correct this before it ends up being a fight at DEP like the last project was.
The last project, what was the fight on that, what, when was that?
It was, it was in zone two, and.
But what was the project then?
It was for a cemetery.
The cemetery had nothing to do with it, the cemetery had everything to do with the fact that you're not supposed to have a cemetery next to you.
No, 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 no.
We never got that built, I'm gonna tell it right here, they are going by our town map, it's in area three, that's what their special permit's for, so that's what we have.
But DEP has regulations for zone two, which they need to conform to, 'cause if zone two regulations have changed, doesn't matter what our regulations are, zone two regulations will supersede our regulations.
We don't have zone two.
We do, we have, we, we defined our aquifer, it's the water protection overlay district, that is our aquifer, and our aquifer has two, well, three areas, area one, two, and three.
Then you answered the question, you said BE, they don't have to deal with DEP, so if that's the case, they deal with them, we only can do what's in front of us, which is area one.
Well, they're not gonna deal with them, so at some point in time, this project is gonna hit the wall with DEP, because DEP is responsible for protecting our wells, and as I said, and the town knows, any contamination from this project will reach our wells in six years and nine months, now, I've said what I have to say.
Yep.
And I just wanna go on the record, because I was here for the housing partnership, but it wasn't open to the publics, so I didn't get to speak, so I don't wanna be accused of tossing bombs at the housing partnership later on during the election season, thank you.
Okay, could've gone to their meeting last night, that's, that's, that's when they have it, I was just to vote for the housing partnership.
I was invited.
What? For the public meeting? You're always invited to public meetings, unfortunately, you never know where they're meeting, 'cause some are at the libraries, some are here.
I know, I know.
No, that's not an issue. Anyone else from the public regarding this, okay, now make a motion to close again?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, opposed, can I make a motion to approve site plan and special permit?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, okay. Only two people know Jim Mello, me and you.
No, no, Joe knows.
Will you pick your own, though?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
It's a proved subject to the committee.
Tom, you wanna take my phone with you, you can answer my texts.
It's a proved subject to the committee.
You wanna take my phone with you, you can answer my texts. It's me. Yeah, the name.
The hour band after seven thirty, Titanium Group. We have a letter, Titanium Group, for two, two eight five Providence Highway, from their attorney saying please accept this correspondence, this is a withdrawal without prejudice, applicant's application site plan approval, if the applicant decides relief is required, they'll submit a new application, so he's asking us, is anybody here for that? No, okay, no one cares, then, all right, make a motion to allow him a withdrawal without prejudice?
Second.
Any discussions, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero, oh, is that the gas station? Yeah, they don't want the.
Yeah, Mark, they, they decided they're gonna scale back the project and just replace it as it was, yeah, so, they're withdrawing from the ZBA too.
Okay, hour being after seven thirty-five, Pinnacle Point, continued hearing. This was the first before me when I got on this in one ninety-two. To the Wampu Planning Board, February seventeenth, okay, as the applicant for the dependent plan, Pinnacle Point Multifamily Subdivision, we respectfully request that we be allowed to withdraw application of presence from the planning board at this time, February twenty. the planning board at this time, February 24, 2019. And in the future, we would request that the board consider crediting, crediting the fees. Well, that's another withdrawal, but, all right, so we have a request.
What date did you say, Jack? February 24th?
No, 21st.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a request from the applicant to withdraw. All right, anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll make a motion to allow to withdraw without prejudice?
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Five, zero, zero.
Mr. Trump, I think several members of the public are here. Should press one like this. I knew we just withdrew it, but...
He withdrew, so you're all here for Pinnacle?
We get to say nothing.
All you guys going out together?
They didn't ride together.
Tell you what, if he's taking off the beer, you better hold him, because he's not that known, that's stupid early. All right, done with you, John?
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. And Bristol Brothers Development. Okay, so...
Just so you know, this is him, he probably can't get anything from the...
Oh.
It's just a new...
All right, okay, with the hour being after 7:40 PM, we have a special permit for, known as special permit 1902 for properly located Redmond West Street. Sets the map 32, parcel 85, 95, 96, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60. And map, map 40, parcel 6. The owner record being Bristol Brothers Development, Hingham. And they want, they're seeing a special permit for the water resource because they're in the aquifer protection and that's, the hearing open, the applicant has requested because he wants to run it concurrent, so are anybody here for that? He wants to run it concurrent with everything else. He's requesting that we don't open and continue it to the, the next meeting, so we have the hearing open and make a motion to allow him to continue it.
Second.
Didn't, did you just say we didn't have it open?
I just opened it up.
You just opened it now?
He's continuing it to March 21st.
Okay, so we'll continue this. We have a motion to open, I mean, to continue, have a vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
It's at 7:33, Jack.
Okay, this will be 7:33 on...
March 21st.
March 21st. And so if this, anybody watching or what or the other, if you can read them off so that everybody knows as well.
7:30 is Bristol on the subdivision, 7:31 is the site plan, 7:32 is a special permit, 7:33 is the WRPOD special permit. I, we need to know who's second of that.
Kay.
Okay, thanks, Kay.
All right, and the question being, but, John, are they going to need special permits for the subdivision too?
I don't.
Then say aquifer, right?
That's a good point.
Unless it's allowed, unless it's allowed by, right, I mean, we don't...
I'll check, I'll check it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check that.
Continue, okay. Dun, dun, dun. A and R Baker Street?
They didn't fit in time, so it's going to be carried over to March 7.
Okay. What else is up?
Okay.
Nothing else? 10:49 main, what's that?
Joe wanted to...
I hear a comment, John.
Jack, I need that one of that.
Yeah. You're gonna have to step down, John.
I have a comment on the 48, 40 B.
March 21st at 7:33.
Go ahead.
With, I guess the ZBA is asking us for comments. My only comment would be that, you know, one of the issues that was always hanging out and was always seemed to be unresolved and seemed to be one of the most important issues and an issue that the town should definitely be involved in is concerning access and the length of the street. We don't know, I don't know, I don't think it was ever resolved, where our, where our road is, how our road affects this. So my thinking is that maybe we should encourage the ZBA to make contact with the Norfolk County engineers and have them go out and lay out our roadway. They do that, they do it for nothing, and I think the ZBA should, should take that task on right from the get-go.
This is regarding Burnzav or...
What's that?
Burnzav or which project you're talking about?
Yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Joe.
Okay, so I will get that comment to the ZBA on behalf of the board.
Have them survey the entire street.
Still good surveys?
Yeah, they, as a matter of fact, I had them late when I was on the Town Forest Committee, we had them survey the entire town forest. They did, they did a great job. So it depends on their schedule and, you know, but the ZBA can work that out with them and let them know the importance of, of the request.
Is that happening?
Is there anything that can derail that at this point?
Not sure yet. I mean, 40Bs can be derailed, it has to take, it takes something pretty severe, but I don't, I can't say for sure.
Does that survey put us towards that point or away from it?
Depends.
Well, 40B, the only thing is on local is conservation, correct?
Right.
The other thing is mass general laws of things called frontage. You ain't got frontage, you ain't got nothing.
The heavens square that away.
Yeah, that's, that's why Joe wants to do that, which kind of, which makes sense because you have an independent in Norfolk County, but I'm surprised town hasn't used them bef, or you used them, but you haven't used them anywhere else, I'm surprised.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware, well, when they wanted to put the solar panels up off of North Street.
Okay.
They descended, the surveyors descended upon that area lickety-split. They were there the like the next week.
Because it was the project.
Right.
All right, what's?
Jack, that was a request for comments for 255 Union Street to the ZBA. They're asking us, my question is if they do what they're trying to do, do they have to come back to revise their site plan?
What are they trying to do?
That, there's a whole letter there, that's why I gave the package.
From Legacy?
Yeah, I'm just not sure if we should respond to the ZBA with saying they should be coming back to us.
Yeah, well, okay, the applicant desires to modi, slightly modify, I like that word. Yeah, scrivviness, okay. Just the bond would use, be used for two units instead of three. The old space in the garage at first floor would not be infilled and converted to a building area. This is the one, the existing cottage and concrete patio will be demolished, a new two-story, two-family unit will be installed. They say the net result is the same number of units, but they're changing that, so...
Yeah.
What is it? Special permit issued, two logs, it's announced we use a four-family, the proposal may not change, three-family, he wants to do two units in the barn, he wants to convert the cottage, yeah, but he's...
Does it sound like slightly?
Use the structure.
That's slightly, then what is?
Right, what is major?
Yeah, well, when he changes, I mean, they're gonna use it for nothing, he's gonna, he would have to come back because he is changing the site plan.
So is that going to be the comment I respond with?
Yeah, I would guess.
Okay.
I wonder what happened, it was going gang, gang buses and as I go by a log, it just kind of like...
Okay, yes, slow way down.
So Kay, do you have any comments, ZBA on that?